Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Village of Woodbury Village Board Meeting for October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence for Mr. John Smith, a village resident that passed away last week. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God. Thank you all. Can you hear me? I thought my audio cut out there for a second. Okay, alright. Okay, first up this evening, we have a trio of public hearings. First public hearings on introductory local law eleven of two thousand and twenty-one, which would amend Chapter Eight Architectural Review Board and A three fourteen Architectural Review Board Rules of the Village Code to revise and clarify the guidelines and standards of the Architectural Review Board. The public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on October first, two thousand and twenty-one. We need to amend ARB and Ridge Preservation because the recently adopted code was a little unclear in several areas, and we just needed to more clearly define the code, which is why we did this. So this will prevent unnecessary referrals to the Planning Board and ARB, which is costing applicants time and money. So before we go any further, we'll go out to the public. Does anybody in the public have anything they want to say on introductory local law?
Yes.
Mr. Ley, is it?
Yeah, my name is Yanko Leitner.
Oh, Leitner, okay.
Leitner, it's probably my name is not.
It's not fully there, okay.
I'm a resident over here in Woodbury Villas, and I'm a contractor as well. And I have a couple clients, and I actually was in the ARB Architecture Board for, for the, for the, this new law. And what I have, what I want to point out, I appreciate that the board trying to keep the village for a nice village, it should be in a nice form, everything. On the other hand, when you're talking about to do an addition or minus stuff, and it's, first of all, it's costing approximately, from my experience and my past customers, it cost me about ten thousand dollars to my clients. And another thing is, I think approximately four to five months to getting approvals to do that. So when I want to try to point out with the village, if we kind of in our way to balance it in square footage, if you're having a big house, I understand, you want to make sure the board have viewed it, or it's coming to small stuff, if we can have the building inspector, it's now a good building inspector, we have a new building inspector, to give him the guidelines based on square footage, let's say a thousand square feet or whatever, it's up to the village to do that. That, but you're not going to, someone builds an addition for ten thousand dollars, for fifteen thousand dollars, he ends up paying for between, to hire for, for, for the village, myself, of course, approximately to forty-five to five thousand, forty-five hundred to five thousand dollars, and then he had to hire an attorney or expedite or someone, there's another six, seven thousand dollars. So that wasn't his best. So that's my comment, basically, if we can try to eliminate this law or some way to balance this in square footage, it should be a little bit better for the community and for the residents to use it. But again, I'm a resident in Woodbury and I understand that we want to keep it, and I like how Woodbury is trying to keep the law, and but on the other hand, I have to try to make it easier as well for the contractors and for the homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leitner. Anyone else on public, on introductory local law?
Hi, I would like to comment.
Mr. Weisenfeld, go ahead, please.
Yeah, hi, good evening. My name is Weisenfeld. I'm the chairman of the UJC. My statement, my take, so if I go over a little, I apologize in advance. The UJC is representing hundreds of Jewish families living here in this beautiful village of Woodbury. As you can see, we have a lot of members participating tonight's hearing for the proposed changes of local laws eleven and twelve. First, I would like to thank the board for taking another look at these laws that were passed in the beginning of this year. As soon as it passed, we reached out to some board members and expressed our concerns, how these laws will affect all the residents of Woodbury and how this is going to overwhelm the planning board with so much more applications. We were told at the time that this law will be looked at again and amended as needed. Therefore, we would like to express our gratitude for actually following through. But we feel as these laws affected our community disproportionately, as over fifty percent of pending applications before the planning board, as listed online on the planning board's website, are from our community, we feel a lot of the issues are not addressed yet in this amendment, and we would like to ask the board to look at it. And there should be some more exceptions added. Since these laws have passed beginning of two thousand and twenty-one, simple items that were up until now, an owner could just walk into the building department and get a permit, we now need to go in front of the planning board, which obviously costs a lot of time and money. We should try to limit these laws to only the construction that really have an adverse impact on the visual of our village. And all other applications should go back the way it was before, that as long as you are within zoning code, following the bulk table, you should be able to go directly to the building department and get a permit. The planning board members are volunteers, and we appreciate their hard work, so we should try and limit their workload and not add to it. The process should be streamlined for the most basic things. So I'll start off, having the requirement for the Ridge Preservation Approval Set at elevation six hundred pretty much affects seventy-five percent of the residents of the village. If you look on the topographical map, you'll see only pretty much on the two sides of the T D two is below that elevation. Otherwise, everyone is above that. And that means for every application, you have to get in front of the planning board and with money and time associated with the process for as little as moving or enlarging a window. And the exterior work you want to do, you now have to go in front of the planning board. And since the planning board was saddled with so much more work as part of the ARB review, to even get your first appearance in front of the planning board can take a long time. And once you are on the agenda, there's still a minimum of two, three months for the most simple applications for approval, some even take longer. So a simple application for an addition for an existing house, which you used to be able to get from the building department for just a building department fee, will now cost you at least additional six thousand dollars for all the, for the village, I'm sorry, for the planning board, for their professionals, and for the application, for the applicant's professionals. In addition, even when the project does impact the ridge line, we should not saddle the owners with extra cost without an overwhelming benefit. Case in point, we appreciate that the board recognized that since ninety percent of houses in Woodbury currently have vinyl siding, requiring just natural material was unreasonable, and are looking to change that. But only allowing to use fiber cement board, which in the industry is called hotty board, is still unreasonable. We actually went out and priced the house to see the difference in price between vinyl siding and hotty board. For a typical house that will cost you between five and seven thousand dollars for vinyl siding will now cost you between forty and fifty thousand dollars for hotty boards. The benefit of the natural look does not outweigh this additional cost levy against homeowners with very little benefit when you can just keep the requirement to use natural tone colors and vinyl siding for the same visual impact. So we implore the board to take another look at the law and see what else we can try and put in as an exception to the benefit of all residents. We thank you for your time and your service. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Weisenfeld. If you wouldn't mind, could you please email your comments to villageclerk@villageofwoodbury.com?
I'll certainly do.
Thank you. Anyone else? Next speaker, please. Mr. Gold?
Yes, hi. Good evening. Thank you again for all you guys are doing. It's greatly appreciated. I'm a new resident in Woodbury. I just would like to share what I went through just now. I didn't do any extension on my house. It was just a re renovation from the inside, just a couple of windows, and I had to go to a planning board for a few months. It was, besides the money that I was paying, it was something that I feel could have been done just with a building inspector. So I would appreciate if you guys can take a second look, so this way someone does not have to go through what I went through. Again, I know that you guys mean well for the community, and I appreciate that. But this is something that should have a second thought and a second look that if someone is not doing an extension, it's just interior work and just to add on just a few windows, that it shouldn't have to go through a planning board, and it should be able to be done by the building inspector. Again, that's, that's my comment, and thank you again for all you guys are doing.
Thank you, Mr. Gold. Anyone else in the public? Last call for introductory local law eleven from the public. Okay, moving on then. So no comments have been received yet from the planning board, but a memo from engineer Barbara to the planning board was received. Does anyone have any questions for counsel or anybody else? I don't think the engineers are on right now, before we move on. No? All right, very good then. So the Orange County Planning GML two thirty-nine response has been received, in which they stated they found no evidence that significant intermunicipal or county-wide impacts would result from its approval. However, the planning board was unable to meet last week to discuss this. And considering the number of comments tonight, I will entertain a motion to, since we can't act on it tonight, I will entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to the meeting on the twenty-eighth. Trustee Jacomoza with the motion. This was, was that a second? Okay, trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oh, wait. Hang on, Kelly.
I just wanted to remind you that you did receive the comments from the building department as well.
Yes, that's right. Well, we did just a couple hours ago, we received some comments from the building department, which we will review and also forward to the planning board for their review and discussion. So we'll reconvene on this on the twenty eighth. Thank you, Kelly. Okay, next public hearing is to entertain public comments on introductory local law twelve of two thousand and twenty-one, which would amend Chapter three ten zoning of the Village Code to clarify the guidelines and standards of Ridge Preservation Review. This public notice was also printed in the Times Herald Record on October first, two thousand and twenty-one. So we'll go right out to the public. Anyone in the public have anything in Ridge Preservation introductory local law twelve? Okay. So again, as with introductory local law eleven, no comments have yet been received from the planning board, and we did also receive a memo on this from engineer Barbara to the planning board. The Orange County Planning GML two thirty-nine response has been received in which they state they found no evidence that significant intermunicipal or county-wide impacts would result from its approval, and they further stated that they appreciate the village's continued diligence in protecting the natural qualities of the view shed within the defined Ridge Preservation Act. So was that with, as with the previous introductory local law, the planning board was unable to meet last week to discuss this. So again, I'm seeing Desiree has something to say.
You, I, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Wait, can you hear me? Okay. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but you, you didn't, on the last motion to continue the hearing to October twenty-eighth, you didn't do an all in favor.
Oh.
You had a motion and a second, but we didn't vote on it.
Okay, I thought I did. My apologies.
No, it's okay. I just wanted to let you know.
All in favor on the previous vote then? Chris?
No, I'm a no.
You're a no? Okay, got it. So three to one, okay. Okay, thank you, Desiree. So where was I? So again, as with the previous code revision that we were looking for, the planning board was, was unable to meet last week. So again, I'm going to be looking for a motion to continue the public hearing until the twenty-eighth. Trustee Jacomoza.
You're going to continue it? I thought we were closing that one out, no?
My apologies. You're right. Looking for a motion to continue the, or you want to, wait, you want to close this one out? I'll tell you what, Andrew, make whatever motion you want to make.
Well, we have a motion to continue already. So do you have a second to continue? If not, then that dies, and you can go for the next one. Right, Kelly? Yeah.
What do you guys want to do?
Aren't they kind of booking legislation?
They are.
They're very similar.
To keep them together, the public hearing open for both of them?
Yeah.
All right.
I can, I'll comment just that it makes sense, because as you could hear tonight, some of the comments that you received on the ARB law are actually applicable to the Ridge Preservation Law.
Exactly, exactly. And, and you know, the only reason I was, I was seeking these motions instead of what we were thinking earlier was there were a lot of comments tonight, and we can't act on it tonight anyway, so it's really not going to hurt it one way or another. All right, so we have the second from trustee Gomez. Any discussion, any further discussion on that? All in favor? How about I? Chris, you're a no, right? Okay, just making sure I didn't miss anything further on that. And I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going back and forth because there are a lot of people still joining. So third and final public hearing for this evening is the Cable Franchise Agreement, continued from September twenty-third. So the last public hearing, the last public hearing this evening is continued from the September twenty-third meeting to entertain public comments on a proposed non-exclusive television franchise agreement between the Village of Woodbury and Cable Vision of Wapinjust Falls, Inc., a wholly owned subsidiary of Altice USA. Does anyone in the public have any comments on this at all? Hey, Robert?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just wanted to appear this evening on behalf of Cable Vision and to give an update, because I know this has been quite a bit of time pending. However, the, as you know, the village did seek a waiver of some procedures which are necessary for an initial franchise due to the fact that there's an existing cable system in the village at this time. Because of the State Administrative Procedure Act, it was required that that request be noticed for a sixty-day period, which it was in the state register. That period has passed and closed at the beginning of this month without any comment on the waiver. So the likelihood is of it being approved is, is nearly certain and just a matter of ministerial action by the Public Service Commission. So it, it looks like, you know, all things are on course in order for the village to assume being the local franchising authority. And I, I just really came this evening to answer any of your questions, if you had any at, at this point.
Well, thank you for that offer. We've been under advice of counsel throughout this whole process, and we have our regular village attorney with us this evening also, but does anyone have any thoughts or comments or questions of any counsel on this? All right, any other comment from the, I'm sorry, Robert, did you have anything else? Thank you, sir.
No, nothing further. Thank you.
Appreciate you showing up tonight. Thank you. Actually showing up. Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, then I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Gomez, can I have a second, please? Trustee Jacomoza, any discussion? All in favor? All right. How about I? It's one of the longest ones I've ever seen. Now I'm looking for a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the Village of Woodbury to enter into a cable franchise agreement with Cable Vision of Wapinjust Falls, Inc., to operate a cable system in the Village of Woodbury. Trustee Jacomoza with the motion. Trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Okay, do we need a roll call this? I don't think so.
Attorney Nugent didn't mention one was required. He did mention that it was a type two under secret, but I read the resolution, and I don't think I saw anything in there about secret.
I thought we did that six or eight months ago, if I'm not mistaken.
Honestly, this public hearing's been going on so long, I can't really be sure.
The better part of this year. I'm, I'm pretty sure we did already.
Okay, I'll double check, and if not, I'll ask him about doing it next meeting.
All right, very good. Moving on then. Public comment on agenda items. Does anybody from the public have any comments they'd like to make on any agenda items? I do not see any hands up, or I don't hear anything, so we will move on to administrative business. Looking for a motion to accept receipt of the minutes of the meeting held September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, trustee Graziano. Can I have a second, please? Any discussion? All in favor? All right. How about I? Looking for a motion to approve abstract nine containing vouchers two one zero six six seven through two one zero eight zero five N in total of two hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Gomez and then trustee Jacomoza with the second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor? Fire Department Equipment Requests, looking for a motion to approve Fire Department Equipment Request twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one, totaling approximately nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents for the purchase of a leaf blower and gear lights.
I'm making it.
Trustee Gomez with the motion. Trustee Graziano, was that you? Okay, with a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
How about I? Okay, next up, re levy of previously exempted properties, looking for a motion to adopt the resolution to re levy a prorated tax amount due on properties located at various locations that were previously eligible for an exemption.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Jacomoza with the motion.
A second.
Trustee Graziano, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
All right. Now we have to accept the resignation, unfortunately. So Chris Riley of the Highway Department and of the Fire Department is pursuing a career in law enforcement, and will be serving with the North Myrtle Beach Department of Public Safety down in North Carolina. So I'm looking for a motion to accept with regrets the resignation of Christopher Riley for the position of MEO effective October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Gomez with the motion. Trustee Jacomoza with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
All right. Good luck, Chris. Old business, appointment to the planning board vacancy. I'm looking for a motion to appoint Evan Yan to the vacancy on the planning board with the term to expire May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two.
I'll make the motion.
Your trustee Graziano, trustee Jacomoza with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, new business. We had a proposal approval for water supply assessment for Andrew Park Well Field, but this item's been tabled with the request of Superintendent Phillips and engineer Barbara. So believe it or not, that actually concludes regular business. Oh, apparently not, Desiree.
Um, since you took Evan off the zoning board and putting him on the planning board, did you?
That now, it's a good idea. Let's advertise for vacant.
Out of curiosity.
Oh, actually, let's hold off on that until the next meeting, because we do have a plan.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Thank you for thinking of that, though. Okay. Public comment on anything at this point? Anybody from the public? Ms. Tortell, go ahead. You have your hand up.
I do, thank you. Some people have mentioned to me at various times when I've been walking around Woodbury, the condition of the bridge on Park Avenue. And after talking to the town and looking at county, it seems to be under the village purview. Can you confirm if that's something that's under the village?
Does it? You're muted if you were saying something.
Um, I'm, maybe, maybe check with Rob, I think he's on what bridge she's referring to, exactly.
That's what I was a little unsure of. Rob, do you know?
Okay, it's, um, hold on one second. It is, let me pull up the map. It's down on Park Avenue. Sorry, my phone is moving a little. Right, right. It's where Woodbury Creek, it crosses over Woodbury Creek.
Didn't the state recently come in and do a bunch of work there, Rob? I don't know if Rob can unmute.
I think they did work on the creek itself. There was some cleanup, if I remember correctly. But they're talking about the bridge itself. I'm just trying to, before I go any further, trying to ascertain if this is, you know, the village, or if it's, you know, if you know who is responsible for that bridge.
Well, if we're talking about the bridge at the intersection of Pine Hill and Park Avenue, the Green Bridge.
Yes.
That's actually a county bridge, Lori.
Okay, it is a county bridge, because I'm trying, trying to figure it out.
All right, let me finish. It's actually, they have plans on replacing that bridge. I actually got confirmation from them at the beginning of the year that they're probably going to start replacing it in the spring, I believe, but you might want to check with Commissioner Danega on that.
Yeah, I'll check with Commissioner Danega. When I first was looking at the bridge, I was told that it was a, the town said it was a village bridge. That's why I'm coming to you with it tonight to get to the bottom. And I know that the county has several bridges coming up. We did some in the fall of this, or the spring, summer of this year, and they have more coming up in their capital plan for next year.
No, yeah.
I want.
Yeah, you were, you were kind of misinformed there. It is definitely a county bridge.
Okay, thank you. Then I'll, I'll take it to the county, to Commissioner Danega. I appreciate that. Thanks, guys.
Excellent. Dr. Sean, I see your hand up, and while you're unmuting yourself, I'm not sure if you were on earlier, but we did have to push those public hearings back to the next. Well, we didn't have to push the public hearings, but we were unable to take action tonight because the planning board had yet to provide comment, because they had a last-minute cancellation of their last meeting. So that's why we, but I'm not sure if that's what you're going to ask or something else.
It, it kind of was, but the question that I had was, I was unable to mute before, but it didn't seem to be any objections to the exceptions that were, were discussed at the previous planning board meeting. Is there any reason that we can't proceed with those and continue to have other discussions about extensions and other concerns that the folks brought up at a later date and, and look at that law further, but bring in the exceptions for now?
Well, the reason we're not moving forward is not necessarily because of any comments received tonight, but because the planning board has not been able to comment yet. They haven't, they haven't been able to discuss it at one of their meetings, and they haven't been able to comment in writing to the village board prior to us taking action. That's, that's.
Wasn't that what was done a couple weeks ago, that the planning board discussed this and approved solo projects and so, so forth, and a couple of other projects?
Those were resolutions that they approved. They were supposed to consider these two proposed local laws at their meeting last week, which didn't happen, so it's on their agenda for their meeting next week to consider them and to provide a report to this board.
So what's the process then? If they first do this and they approve it, and we have to wait for another village board meeting? I mean, some of us have been waiting now for four or five months for solo projects.
Yeah, I know, and as soon as I heard that they were unable to have their meeting at the last minute, you were the first person I thought of, Doc. I apologize for that, but it was unavoidable.
Are, are we going to need another village meeting after that? That's what I'm asking you.
No, no, no. So on the twenty-eighth, pending any other changes or cancellations of any kind, which unusual, we'll be able to close the whole hearing and act on it on the twenty-eighth.
Which is the planning board meeting or the village?
That would be the village board meeting on the twenty-eighth, and that is subject to if there are any substantive changes that the board makes, you need to have it on your desks for seven days in advance.
So what she's saying is, if we decide to make any substantive changes based on comments received from the planning board, and we did not receive those changes, have them sitting on our desk seven days from today, which would be seven days prior to the next meeting, then we would not be able to act on the twenty-eighth, but that's, I don't think anybody's intention, that would really be dependent on how quickly the planning board acts, which, actually, now that I say that, their meeting is a week from yesterday, so that's going to be pretty tight, right, Kelly? It's possible. Can't promise anything, no. I understand where you're coming from. I know you've been waiting quite a while. We've had multiple conversations over the past few months about this, and we're doing the best we can based within the limits of the law. Doc?
I'm, I'm kind of lost in words here. I'm sorry.
No, well, yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm kind of caught in the political nonsense. I mean, I I'm I'm kind of caught in the political nonsense uh of for for projects that have been were previously approved and well, you know, at this point, I may lose out on state benefits uh if we if you guys continue to push this and this goes beyond the first of the year. Let alone the fact that it's costing me hundreds of dollars per month every time I get an O and R bill. And there are projects all over Woodbury which have been done over and over.
Which is exactly why, well, one of the several reasons why we took another look at these local laws as we discussed. And I and I just will also respond that this isn't anything to do with politics. This is about the law and about how how state law works with regard to village code and so on. We have to follow a process that's dictated to us by the state. We can't just arbitrarily make decisions without following the law. Kelly, any other thoughts on that or?
That was worded wonderfully.
I I mean, so realistically, are we looking at the twenty-eighth now or are we really looking into December at this point?
Well, certainly no earlier than the twenty-eighth, if not the twenty-eighth, based on again, simply the timeline dictated by law. The next meeting after that, there's only one in November. I'm looking at the calendar. I think it's the sixteenth, Tuesday the sixteenth. Is that right, Des?
Six, yes, the sixteenth.
But but you know, we we'll do everything within our power to make it happen on the twenty-eighth. I understand your frustration. I really do. I I get it. I I wish I had something better to offer you, but all I could do is tell you the truth and tell you the way the law works. All right, anything further, Doc?
I have no, 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 thank you.
I'm sorry. Uh anyone else from the public on anything? Okay, last call for public comment. Okay, we'll move on to board member and department head comment. So just have a couple of brief comments. I'd like to again congratulate Chris Riley for his acceptance of a job as a police officer uh with the North Myrtle Beach Department of Public Safety. I'm sure his father, who's a retired FDNY lieutenant and his uncle, the chief of police for the town of Raupo down in Rockman County, you're very proud of him as we all are. And we wish him well in his new career. He's really going to be missed. Uh he's a good member of the community. Uh also want to express regrets on the passing of Mr. John Smith. You know, John was one of those guys that was at every meeting there was, every budget meeting, every village board meeting, every town board meeting, ZBA planning board as much as possible anyway. And he was just always around and he had a good wealth of knowledge of the community and uh he's going to be missed. He was liked by quite a few people. So God bless, Mr. Smith. And that's all I really have. I'm going to move down to Mr. Graziano.
Thank you, Tim. I echo your same comments of John Smith condolences to his family. He was um me, him and I have interacted at a bunch of meetings, both town and village over the last, you know, five or six years that I've been attending all these meetings. And he definitely was a wealth of knowledge. So I I echo your comments one percent. Um I'd also like to thank everybody for participating tonight. Um I like to see more people participate in their government and have questions and have comments. It's a good thing. Um so going forward, I'm very happy with that. So and I have very little other to say tonight than that. So I mean, everybody out of here.
Thank you, trustee Graziano. Trustee Gomez.
Um I'll be short also. Uh my condolences to the family, John Smith. Uh he used to be actually my daughter's uh math tutor. So I really miss him. Rest in peace. And to young, to the young Mr. Riley there, good luck, stay safe, always head on a swivel. And thank you all for coming out and participating. This is great. Get good feedback. And this is how the process goes. I know for some, you know, it's not what you look for. It's not the answer, but unfortunately, with bureaucracy the way it is, we have to follow it as low as it is. So it was apologize when we can't get things done as quickly as you wish, but we're trying. You know, our board is always on top of stuff. We're trying. We got great lawyers, great, great clerks and great department heads as well as workers. So I thank you all. And have a good night. Stay safe and God bless.
Thanks, Susie. Trustee Jacque Camazza.
Um so let me begin by just thanking everybody for coming out. It it's important to take part in the process. This, I I fully believe this board has tried to remain as transparent as possible. Uh these meetings we went back to because we get more participation from the public while at the same time streaming it to social media, which even gets more involvement for us. Um you know, walking around the village of Woodbury, yes, you talk to many residents, but you sometimes don't get to hear how a local law that you are working on, that you feel is going to benefit the character in the neighborhood and how it may adversely affect other residents in terms of the cost of of doing business here. So I encourage you to continue showing up at the meetings. We are going to be continuing with these virtual meetings till the end of the of the calendar year. So please take part in the process. Let us know your thoughts on the job that we're doing and what we are working on. And um that's the way good government works. When you work with your residents, you work with your people to govern. So I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Uh I do want to offer my condolences to the McLennan family as well. Um they've had a tough year and a half. So my condolences to them once again. John Smith was a a Woodbury original um that I don't know if he is so easily replaced going forward. And he was a regular fixture at our meetings and he always asked the questions. Um and he will be missed because he was on the Parks Committee and he was also on the library board uh you know, on his passing. And then finally, I also want to congratulate Chris Riley. He comes from good stock. I know the Riley family very well. They're very active in this community. Um I wish them all the best and that's it. And have a good night.
Thank you, Andrew. Moving on to department heads. Desiree? Nothing. Uh Mr. Penella?
No comment.
Nothing. Okay, uh Rob, anything further?
I just wanted to reiterate what everyone's saying about Chris. He was a great worker uh for the two years he was with us. And uh he will be missed and we wish him nothing but the best in his future endeavors.
Thanks, Rob. Mickey?
Uh no, Tim, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Uh Kelly, anything? Okay, I don't think I missed any department heads, right? Anyone else? No. All right, so then with no further business to discuss, I can have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Gomez with the motion. Trustee Jacque Camazza with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
How about I? Very good. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Good night. Good night.